I was calling the library because I know that was where you spent a fair amount of the day. I think you did. But got the answer you should have. Not surprised. I'll call, call his house. Hi, fellas, this is Tom. Is Joe on it, is Joe on, is ready to meet? Where is he now? Uh, I think we're gonna go ahead. You wanna, you wanna come over when you can? I'm not surprised. Okay. We will proceed. See you tomorrow, probably. Okay. He is bushed from the library book sale and forgot and is not incoming. So we will proceed. Okay. I'm calling to order this planning commission work session. As you probably all know, this is going to be a presentation by Dr. John Allen about the results of his research. Well, the results of his research. And we will have some questions, the commission will have some questions for him, I'm sure, I know I will. But there won't be any questions or comments from anybody other than people sitting at the table here, just in case anybody is expecting to. And with that, we are in order and the one discussion item is Dr. Jonathan Allen, Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, Dogami, sand management discussion. Okay, I just said, no, guess not. Okay, consideration of ZO 1801 and CP 1801. City of Cannon Beach request for zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan tax amendments updating the city's four dune management plan will take place at the July 26th, 2018 year. And Mark, did you want to say anything before we proceed?
Yeah, so the status where you are on this as you closed the hearing at your last meeting in May, so that ended testimony on this item, asked me to schedule this work session with Dr. Allen and then in subsequent emails, I was asked to include press staff in that discussion also. So they're here too. I told all of them that this was not a formal presentation, it was mostly question and answer. Dr. Allen gave the presentation in May, not, not May of this year, but May of 17, it was quite a while ago. And I know you've had a lot of time to look at the various iterations of the report and that generates more questions. So that's kind of the purpose of this meeting tonight. If you get through this and get to the end of that, you can't do any deliberation or voting or anything like that of this. It was advertised as a work session, but I will, unless you tell me otherwise, schedule this for your July 26th regular meeting and then it will be open for you to make motions, have a discussion and drive this hopefully to some sort of conclusion.
Thank you. Dr. Allen?
So I don't have any formal presentation.
Oh, okay.
Because, I mean, my, as I said, my understanding was that this was gonna be more of a Q and A.
Okay.
So I'm here to answer any questions that you have in relation to the report and content of the report or things and so on.
Okay.
Actually, one other thing I should say is the copy of the report in front of you and over there is, is now the final report. You can distinguish that from the earlier one because this one says special paper 49 near the top. If you have another one that says special paper XX but it's dated 2018 down towards the bottom of the page, it is the same with the exception of the cover.
And the numbering of pages.
Yeah, it's a little different numbering. Like what's on 70 in this one is on 68 or 72.
Okay.
It was two pages off.
Ah, okay.
So I'm kinda wondering where the filler is.
I can't explain that.
Which did you say is the number of the final?
The final paper is special paper 49 near the top.
Yes, got it.
But that should be substantively the same as a earlier one, which was special paper XX.
Right.
As long as it says 2018 at the bottom. There's an earlier version that says 2017 at the bottom. That really was substantively different in terms of moving sections around.
So section 6.0, dune management implications, is 70 in XX version and 68 actually in, in this version. So I'm just wondering what the difference is. Is there like, is it a table of contents or?
It's probably a table of contents. It could be, I mean, there was just some minor editing once it went through the final sort of copy editing round.
Nothing substantive?
Nothing substantive.
I guess I'm a little disappointed because I thought we were having a presentation of the
Changes.
Changes that were being made and so to have it just be open for question thing doesn't seem very organized to me.
So let me just address the changes that were made. So the changes that were made to the report was largely cosmetic in the sense of improving the flow of the report from what it was originally developed, from how it was originally developed. And so in order to, to make it flow better, after an extensive sort of review process both internally and externally in our agency, we decided to move, for example, the section on processes up front sooner to allow for the report to flow better so it's more easily understandable. There's nothing short of a few enhancements in some of the sections relating to vegetation where some additional research was found based on some work that was done in Japan using native Oregon grasses over there. Those are the only real changes that were implemented. And the rest of it's just editing. So the conclusions that were actually developed originally in the, I guess, in the draft report last year, October last year are pretty much unchanged.
So section 6.0, dune management implications, has not changed at all since the original report?
So there's been again, just some minor copy editing, some additional enhancements where we've identified some references of studies that had actually implemented dune management practices in Japan where they've actually planted native grasses from Oregon over there. And so there was some interesting results that they found where by planting native grasses on their dunes, it actually contributed to procreation of their dunes and so it was simply reporting those facts.
That's the only difference.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure I can restrain myself that long, but I would like to, to go last and therefore to sort of go around the table. Ms. Kerr, would you, would you like to, or unless there's somebody who would like to come forward?
This is totally different than I thought we were gonna do. This is, I thought he was gonna provide to us the information, kind of go through it and then we could ask questions after.
So again, I mean, I went through this in, in May last year and again, the content from that presentation would not be changed other than maybe some tweaking of numbers. But it's, the presentation I gave last year would be very comparable to what I would give now.
Well, I'm gonna ask you to go through 6.0 with this right now, dune management implications.
And specifically?
Look at the whole thing. The whole section, just go through it with this. Okay, let me give you an example, but I'm looking at paragraph one.
What page are you on?
We're on, well, page 68 in one of them.
It's 68 in the binder document that you have.
And 70 in mine where I have writing on it, so I need my own notes. Okay. So looking at the paragraph, it is apparent that a fourth objective is necessary. Could, could you talk about where you got that from, that paragraph scientifically?
I have no idea where you took what you took from that.
Okay, page 68.
Under heading 6.1 background.
Oh, see, it's different, it's different, no, no, completely different. Six, no, 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 it's not, you're right. 6.0, dune management implications. Then under that, it's 6.1 background and it's paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4.
Right.
It is apparent that a fourth objective is necessary. So can you explain where that came from?
So it's an observation that
Based on what?
It's an observation based on what's taking place on the Oregon coast, which is that one of the goals of managing dunes is from the standpoint of maintaining the watershed. It's also well established in the scientific literature where this is happening elsewhere in the world.
But I, I guess I'm trying to understand how that's a scientific principle.
I didn't say it's a principle, I just said it's a, I just said it's an objective. It's one of the goals of maintaining a dune system.
Is it, is it an objective for a municipality?
It could be, sure.
Well, I'm just wondering where you got it from because it just seems to be, I'm not understanding.
Are you saying that your research has shown that in other communities on the, on the west coast, Pacific coast, they are adapting or adopting these requirements?
So what I'm saying here is that there are, there are obviously certain goals with respect to dune management. One of which is to obviously maintain the integrity of the dune in order to mitigate and buffer against storm conditions. One is to maintain habitat. And then I offered up a fourth objective, which is whereby some communities are now wanting to grade dunes for the purpose of maintaining the watershed. And my point remains the same, that this is an approach that's being trialed or adopted and implemented, not just here in Oregon, but elsewhere around the country and around the world. It's a fact.
That people are doing it?
Yeah.
I know, but I, I guess, I, what I, I'm
So it's an objective in the sense that one needs to, to manage that situation somehow. So you don't just go ahead and willy-nilly, cut the dune down to some arbitrary data and then see what the consequences are. So it needs to be managed. And, and I would argue that that's the role of, you know, we can provide the scientific evidence to guide the management side, but that's what's, what's needed to be done. But ultimately, you all are making that decision to go the next step.
So you're not making any judgment in here about whether it should be done or shouldn't be done?
No, I'm not making that, I'm not making that judgment at all.
You're just saying that it is being considered in various jurisdictions around the world. I wish you had said it that way then in your report because it's confusing to me, the way it's said. It just doesn't, it sounds like, you know, you're, you're listing these various things and then really, this is just sort of a narrative about what is happening other places. You know, so there seems to be an implicit value objection, that's all I'm saying.
And what can we do about that? As far as maybe putting an asterisk on things.
Yeah, it just
I don't think it changes the argument, will distort
No, I just, it's just nice to have, I just would be appreciated, I guess, if the, if the, this is data and I would appreciate, I guess, if it was clearer what that is because it sounds like, I think it has led to almost a, a conclusion that that is a necessary or a valid purpose. And I'm, and I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying that the way this is worded makes it sound like it is and leads to other things.
So I'm not saying that dune, dune grading is, is here, I'm not saying that this is something you should be doing, I'm just saying, stating an observation that it's becoming more apparent that in some areas, there is an additional objective in dune management activities where grading is, is a part of that process of consideration.
It is permitted in our current regulations, right?
Honesty, correct.
Again, it's an observation from multiple activities that are going on around the country and around the world.
Okay, I think, would it be fair to, I, my, my perception is, Ms. Kerr's discomfort with this is that it seems to be equating the, the status of that fourth objective, which I think is a preferential, you know, we want, a lot of people want to do that with the, the other ones in terms of protecting from flooding, protecting native plants and animals and so forth, which we have an obligation
Sure.
To do. And I, I think, I think, I think she has a valid point, but I think you've responded to
I don't disagree with that. Again, the point is if you're going to do dune grading, then you need to have science to guide the grading. That's what this is about.
Yes.
It needs to be integrated into your management plan. That's the purpose behind it.
Yes, and that's why we asked you to do this.
Right.
Right. But that's exactly what, that's, thank you for articulating that. That is what bothered me about it, is, is it's equating that with the other three. And actually, at this point, there's, I mean, there's a lot of citizens in this community who don't want dune grading at all.
That's right.
So, so it, but by equating it with protecting habitat and protecting against flooding, you know, as a fourth objective, that's why I'm objecting to the way this is
So let me again reiterate what I just said before, that in other parts of the country, people are actually doing grading activities. When you do that, you need to be mindful of all the other factors that are going on, including protecting the dune to buffer against waves as well as protecting habitat. It's all part of the consideration.
Right, well, I wish you had said it that way.
It says that.
No, it doesn't say it that way.
I disagree.
Well, you know, it doesn't say anything about it's being done in other parts of the country, it doesn't say anything about, it's listing four different criteria and this is one of them.
Maybe I should introduce a question to one or both of you. Is there a mechanism by which anything that comes out of this discussion can be fed back into a later version of this? Or is this, this is, this is the report that's been submitted and
Correct.
We've accepted it as, as their, as a work product?
I, I think John's right, this is a final report.
Okay.
But I don't think that locks you into a particular prioritization of those four objectives. I think your jobs as policymakers is to balance those and find out, find the balance that works here for us. So I don't, the fact that that fourth objective seems to be treated on an equal basis with the other three, I don't think that
We don't have to treat it that way.
Yeah, it doesn't constrain your activities in the least. You, your, your job is to balance those and reach whatever balance you think works best in Cannon Beach.
That makes sense.
So I don't think this is conflicts with that at all, from that point of view.
Are you satisfied that we're not, we're not gonna make any further progress on that point?
Oh, we're not going to.
Do you have some other questions?
No, not right now.
Or issues? Robin? Misery'sly.
I'll cast for the moment.
Okay. Mr. Bennett?
I just have a very general question, but maybe doesn't have an answer. As far as we know, starting sometime in the future, could the reverse process happen?
Meaning sand?
Sand start moving south?
So that's a possibility, yes. And, and it's something, it's one of those big unknowns that we've been struggling with for some time. So, I mean, the general model on the Oregon coast is that sand transport is obviously governed by prevailing wave directions. And we have a strong seasonal character to our, our prevailing wave directions. In the summer months, our waves are predominantly from the west to northwest, that drives sand back to the south. In the winter months, we see waves coming from more, at least the biggest storms, which actually produce the most change. Those waves are coming from the southwest. So you see this seesaw pattern taking place in multiple cells up and down the Oregon coast. That's kind of the normal picture. But the reality of it is that we're, in the last three decades in particular, we've started to learn a lot more about the fact that that, that process may not be as, as clear as it was proposed three decades or so ago. And that, part of that, part of the reasoning for that is that in the last three decades, we've seen the effects of major El Niños, particularly in 1982, 83, 97, 98, and most recently in 2015, 16, that actually have a very dramatic impact on our, on our beaches, resulting in more enhanced erosion at the south ends of our cells and more alongshore transport, which means more movement to the north. So the question then becomes is, could we see that, and we know that these, these El Niños occurring on even longer climate cycles that are on the order of 30 to 40 years, these are associated with Pacific coastal isolation. So the question, and, and we basically since 1976 through until, I think it was around early 2000, there was a period dominated by El Niños. It's also coincident with the time that we've seen more longshore transport taking place in this particular cell, we've seen it elsewhere down in Rockaway.
Are you seeing this a coincidence or a cor-occurrence?
Coherence. It's, it's coincidence, occurred at the same time. So we've seen the El Niños occurring persistently over this period, producing a longshore transport and so we've seen this buildup taking place
Okay, that, to me, coincidence in you
So grading, what's driving this up?
It's accidental, that it's, there's no causative effect.
No, no, there's cause and effect.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the questions that researchers have started to look into is whether we might see reversal. The short answer is we don't know the answer to that one right now. It's a possibility. We've seen geologic evidence of instances, I mean, let me draw you an example. So in Nescuin, in the mid 1990s, Nescuin is located just north of Cascade Head. Its northern boundary for the cell is actually all the way up, it's beyond Cape Canaveral, it's up by Cape Lookout. In the mid 1990s, Nescuin was a community that was being inundated with sand. They were actually grading their dunes there because sand was accumulating in amongst their homes. Today, you go to Nescuin, there is no sand, there is no dune system anymore. It's all gone. And where it's gone is it's gone predominantly offshore and it's gone northward, up along the Stucka Spit there and up towards Pacific City. Pacific City is now struggling with excess sand problems up there. But the fact of the matter is that prior to that, there was clearly more sand in the south. So it's, it's possible. It's just that we are dependent on the right climatic conditions to result in, in obviously fewer big storms coming out of the southwest. This is all we need, is, is lower wave energies, fewer large storms coming out of the southwest and we would need a stronger, more persistent summer condition of north, northwest that he winds to drive that sand back to the south. It's the only way it's gonna happen. So there's a lot of factors that have gotta come into play to, to drive that. But it's an unknown, yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
So on the executive summary, I'm trying to figure out how you are measuring the losses of sand. Is that from the exposed beach and the lateral cells or how do you feel about measuring that?
Yeah, so that's, that's a good question. So, so the approach that I took was to basically divide the coastline up into discrete compartments. And that was done by choosing physical features along the coastline that seemed like the right place to break it up, to, in order to be able to develop an accounting of, of the, the amount of sand in each of these, these sub-compartments. Some of these are very logical, like Felton Cove. I mean, that's a pretty well-defined little sub-cell between two headlands. Arch Cape was, is, is a little bit more complicated because Arch Cape pretty much goes all the way up to, in an uninterrupted sense, all the way up to Cannon Beach here. But we, I used, you know, places like Hug Point and things like that, features in the landscape to actually just break it up. Then because of, as you get up into the bluffs and as you get up into the dunes, you know, you're dealing with vegetation that, we're relying on LiDAR data to, you know, develop this accounting, we have to kind of constrain it somehow. So I think the bottom line message that I indicate there is that, you know, these are minimum numbers at the end of the day, but they're pretty good insights into what's going on.
Okay.
Obviously, what's happening below the waterline
Yes.
Is a complete unknown, meaning that we, we have one measurement of the bathimetry that myself and colleagues made in 2012, I think it was, actually early in that, 2010 I think it was. And there haven't been any repeat surveys since. So we have no sense of, you know, what's, how it's changing below, we know it changes.
Yeah, well, I'm looking, I'm looking at the figures and over a 21-year period of time, Tolavona North, Toluana South, Silver Point, Arch Cape, those are actually very minimal amounts of total yardage
Right.
Over a 21 period of ti, a 21-year period of time. So what I'm trying to figure out, since I live down Tolavona, I, I walk and bike the beach and my calibration is there key stones in the beach that I look at to see if there's, you know, if there, is there's less sand around these key stones or not? So what I'm trying to figure out is some of these key stones at Silver Point and down below Brailer actually have about the same amount of sand as, as two years ago. And yet, there are people here that are saying, oh, we should haul sand down to Tolavona, which doesn't make any sense to me because if the prevailing wind is taking it north, that material that's shipped down is going to head back down to Ecola.
Right, you're correct. It will go back down there. In, in the current regime that's going on right now, sure, it'll probably take some time, but it'll go back down there. So, so my point is, you know, we have to try and constrain through some way to actually figure out volumes of change. And, and you're right, that you can see on a, on a month-to-month basis, you can see, you know, vertical changes, we measure this, vertical changes taking place out on those beaches there that are this, vertical changes taking place out on those beaches there that are six to eight feet between summer and winter. But in order to be able to, and, and we have, you know, as part of this project, we established, was a forty-five transects along the entire cell to try to actually get at the, the seasonal variability and some of the interannual variability. But we just don't have a long record. So now we're limited to LiDAR that was collected in nineteen ninety-seven, LiDAR was collected in ninety-eight, two thousand and two, two thousand and nine, twenty sixteen. We have five data points in which to try to constrain these numbers. And, and the summary there is the product of that process.
So is this, are these calibrations taken the same time of the year, every, during that five-year period of time? Are they taken in summer, winter?
So ninety-seven was flown pre, pre-winter. Ninety-eight was flown just actually early spring. So it was late winter. So that, that brackets the nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight El Niño. Two thousand and two was measured in summer. Two thousand and nine was measured in summer. Two thousand and sixteen was measured at the end of winter. So yes, we have some summer-winter combinations. We also have some summer-to-summer combinations. We have some summer-to, you know, longer term. But the point is to try to constrain over those multiple flights gives us a sense of what the beach is doing.
But when you're making those calibrations, you're just doing it one, like in one day? Is that, I mean, these various points that I mentioned, are, they're calibrated and the, for, for that one day?
For that, that particular period of time. So what I'm generating is, is a change between nineteen ninety-seven and ninety-eight, then from ninety-eight to two thousand and two, two thousand and two, to two thousand and nine, two thousand and nine, and two thousand and sixteen. Yes, you're right. There's a lot of stuff that may be going on in between there, but I, we don't have that data. So we have to constrain it somehow. That's, that's the best approach we can do.
Okay. So.
So then when I present the results, I presented as, as net changes from year, from, from survey to survey, as well as a, a, a net change from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. So I want to move on to the, the major change that I saw in this report was the use of native grasses versus the European grass. And I advocated that two years ago and, and the state said, no, we're not doing that. We want to replace that with European beach grass. So now there's some emphasis on native grasses. So I want to know a little more about where that has been used, particularly, I think you mentioned it in California, and if, if there's been a follow-up as to how that kind of treatment changes from being, using European beach grass.
Yes, me?
So I have some information from, from Humboldt, from where they, where they've done some work. And it hasn't been for a long period of time. And I don't have, I, I have, I have a few reports. And then I have, I have some emails. And an ecologist who works with US Fish and Wildlife was down there, where they removed European beach grass and they, and they planted the native west coast dune grass. And it's established. And, and she said, you know, it's on all of our dunes. It's on our tallest dunes. And, but her, her point, what I was just asking, I was just asking her, you know, Cannon Beach is interested in, in maybe using natives? As someone who is in, as an ecologist who's in a place where you're actively growing native dune grasses on your dunes, you know, do you have any suggestions for me as someone who's, you know, working with the city on this? And, and her, I, I brought her email. Her, she said, if you're looking to lock dunes in place so that sand does not move, then European beach grass, I mean, we all know this.
Yeah.
If you, and, and where they're planting these native, the native grasses, they have significant back dune area and they have no infrastructure. So there's space for the sand to move eastward and, you know, and to move. She did say that the native grasses is stable, the dunes are stable. But she said, you know, if you're concerned about infrastructure, you know, this, her suggestion would be to stick with European beach grass. But that doesn't, and so, I mean, I really think this is an issue that, that you all need to, to grapple with and figure out policy-wise. And I'm really glad you're here because I'd like for, if, you know, you wrote about it in the report, you also, I did, I wasn't able to find the information from Japan. And I, I am very curious about that and, and what, what that is showing. Because that's, that's a much longer period of time. And so I think if you have information, additional information to share about that, it'd be really useful.
So I thought that when you made your presentation, that there was several year periods that they, that they've actually had these native grasses.
They have.
So is that, I thought it was like ten years.
It is, it is. What, the new, the, the changes that were made in, in Dr. Allen's report included, you know, planting the native, the native plant back in the eighties in Japan. So that's a much longer dataset for seeing what native grasses are doing on dunes. Ten years is fine, but it's really not that long. And, you know, and so it, it's a, it's a topic, I think, where I'm not, I'm not sure that consensus has been reached yet, but I, and so I'm just curious. I, I reached out because I was, I was at a sea level rise workshop and there were folks from California State Parks who've been doing some work down in Humboldt. So I just reached out to them to see what they were saying.
Could I follow up on Mr. Johnson's question by asking, are there areas along the west coast that still have native, you know, native beach dune grass from time immemorial that didn't get outcompeted by European beach grass? Because those certainly would give you a, you know, if, if there's somebody can look at, they would, they would give you a long baseline.
So native grasses were planted at Cape Lookout State Park on a, on an artificial dune that was built there to protect the state park.
Yes.
And it's still flourishing.
And remind me how long ago that was.
So that was, the artificial dune was built in nineteen ninety-nine. So it's been going a while. But it's a, it's a slightly different kettle of fish to what you have here because it's, again, it's an artificial dune in that it consisted of, of sandbags on which the, to form the shape of the dune and then, you know, build sands, then build in around the interstices between the, the bags and so on, covered with present at fire club. So it's a much more engineered structure.
Sure.
And it's fronted by a cobbler boom that's also engineered. So it's, it's not quite the same situation. But it is present there. It's, it's, it continues to be an effective grass there. It, you, you will find that European beach grass is starting to encroach. But they're not doing any maintenance work to, to pull it out or anything like that.
I, my question really was the opposite situation of, are, are there any beach areas along the coast where when Lewis and Clark came through, there was native beach grass? It's been there ever since. It hasn't been outcompeted by European beach grass. No, no.
I'm not aware.
No residual that you're aware of.
Yeah. So you will see.
Would be nice.
You will see Breville Galata, which is the, the Great Lakes grass. It's prevalent along the Klaicke Plains. You'll actually see it growing in front of the, the primary four dune there, on which European beach grass is well-established. You'll find Breville Galata along the Long Beach Peninsula from Washington State. And again, the, the point behind all that discussion on, on the grass is really stems from the work that Sally Hacker, Professor Hacker, and, and her students and researchers at Oregon State had actually spent a lot of time studying the character of these different grasses and how they actually work with respect to trapping sand and then adjusting or changing the morphology of the dunes as a result of these different types of trapping capabilities and growth capabilities and so on.
So we know that the European grass is the problem. It piles up high. So if it were just the native grass, the same amount of sand is flowing up, is some of that going to escape to the east?
So, so the, the, the concept there is to, you know, basically try and do something like what's out on the, let's say, the Long Beach Peninsula, where it would basically build a broader, lower June system, which means that, you know, rather than having a very high front of June, you're actually shifting, ideally, you shift everything seaward.
Yeah.
And so you could actually stabilize different parts of the dunes with, with a variety of different grasses, native and perhaps non-native grasses, or other, other types of species, and, and create a, a much broader, lower June than what's there now. That's, that's kind of the concept that, that was being presented and proposed here.
I'll probably have some more questions, but not right now.
Uh, I guess I'll go through my list of questions and so forth, in the order that I wrote them down, pretty much. But we, go back over what the options would be and the pluses and minuses as far as if, if you were to grade sand off of these dunes, where you would put it? And where we would put it, since it's not going to be you, it's going to be our contractors. It sounds like what you were talking about just now is pushing it off of, past the, onto the beach, in effect, onto the face of the, the four dunes.
Sure.
Have you, I, I know that there was some discussion of trucking the sand down to Mr. Johnson's neighborhood, some question of whether we would be potentially crushing clams or otherwise running over tourists or, or something like that. Is there any, has anybody done much thinking about that, that you were, of the idea of trucking it someplace?
So, so the short answer is no.
Okay.
And so let's go back through the options. You know, by law, Oregon precludes the removal of sand from the physical system.
Mm-hmm.
So it has to stay in the system somewhere.
Good, yeah.
And, and so that means your only option is, is two. You can either grade the dune and push that graded sand seaward, or you can remove it and place it somewhere else, but keep it within the system.
In the cell.
Those are the two options.
Okay.
The pros and cons of, of both. Well, okay, so pushing the sand seaward, if you leave it as.
No planting.
Without planting?
No.
You leave it as it is?
No, no, I don't think anybody's.
Okay, well, I'm just going to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Push the sand seaward, no planting, then that sand is obviously free to be mobilized.
I'm sure it's free to be.
Free to be mobilized. It'll be, it'll be entrained and blown back into the dunes there.
Mm-hmm.
And so that then becomes a nuisance factor. So if you push the sand seaward, it has to be stabilized in some way to minimize the potential for it to actually become a nuisance factor.
Mm-hmm.
So by pushing it seaward, you're just simply, you're, you're keeping it in that local area. You're reliant on waves to remove it or wind processes, neither of which are going to do it, you know, very effectively, to be honest. Unless we get a, you know, unless you, you're basically reliant on a big storm to come in and, and erode whatever's been deposited out there, which is certainly possible. It happens, we see it. But in all reality, it's probably going to sit out there for a little while. Wind is not going to be an effective medium for removing it, as in transporting it southward, if that's, if that's a goal, which, you know, what I was proposing there was that, since we have seen this substantial accumulation of sand in the north and we've identified certain areas in the system that has lost some sand, the alternate proposal was, well, okay, you could truck it down the beach and place it in these other areas and, and provide some sand beach renourishment to those areas. The cons of that obviously is now you're dealing with trying to permit, get permits to drive on the public beach. It's, as you know, Cannon Beach is a very popular area and you're dealing with lots of tourists. There's a timing issue.
Not all the time. A lot of the time is pretty empty.
Right, well. So, so it's, the, the, the benefits for doing something like that, well, obviously, this gentleman here, his beach would gain some sand and they'd benefit for it for a little while. But yes, you're right. It's probably going to get eroded and removed and taken offshore and some of it will eventually end up upstream or downstream of where it was originally placed. I mean, that's part of what happens with sand beach renourishment. And you see that type of process taking place all around the United States and all over the world.
These are not necessarily going to be in any particular order. Do FEMA hundred-year floods, you know, oh, you may know this, include the one and a half foot to ten-foot drop of land in a Cascadia event? Do they take into account that that's going to happen at some time in the future?
No, no, they don't.
Okay. If and when it seems clear that the dunes are naturally eroding at some time in the future, if we have a reversal that you talked about, is it your belief that they could be stabilized fast enough by reintroducing European beach grasses? I'm, I'm guessing that if that kind of reversal takes place, it's going to be pretty, over, over an extended period of time. I'm saying if, if.
So just by.
If changes got made and they didn't have.
So the short answer to that is probably not, because, I mean, just simply the fact of planting the grass is not going to, to cause the sand to come back. You know, so, so the only way you can, i- if, if an area like that was suddenly subject to a series of big storms and was undergoing rapid erosion, the only mechanism that's going to stop that erosion is by placing more sand back into that area.
Hmm.
And then planting. That might stabilize it. But if you are seeing that reversal, then obviously there's some other longer-term factors processes that, you know, really in place there that could be there for some time that's driving these, these changes.
Round pages forty and forty-two, there is mention of four one-hundred-year storms in the course of a year or so. And I remember when I first moved here, in two thousand and six, we had what people said was a, I don't know, a twenty or a fifty-year storm or something like that. And then the next year, we had a hundred-year storm. Do you have any light to shed on this, what a hundred-year storm really is?
So it's a moving target. So let me put it this way. So in, in, when I first arrived in, in Oregon in nineteen ninety-nine, that was shortly after the two worst winters on record, ninety-nine, seven, ninety-eight. At that stage, in that winter, our estimate of the hundred-year storm wave was ten meters, thirty-three feet. We had one event in, in that winter. In ninety-eight, ninety-nine, we had the equivalent of four one-hundred-year events. And they all happened between February and March. One of those events reached forty-five feet, pretty big waves. And so following that, that period of time, we actually reevaluated the hundred-year wave for the Oregon coast. for the Oregon coast. Um, and, uh, it's, it's now estimated to be somewhere on the order of around 50 feet, depending on which part of the coast you're on.
So, so if we took that value, then sort of behindcasting it or looking backward, would there only have been one of those in a 100-year period?
Uh, so...
With a new standard?
With the new, we haven't, we haven't, in the, in the record that we had, we haven't, we haven't seen an event that's approached that yet.
Okay. And do you know, do you know whether FEMA has adopted that as their 100-year storm?
No, they haven't, or at least not in the version we adopted. There is a, a kind of a, a common fallacy, um, that comes out there with these terms 100-year flood, and that's not a flood that happens once every 100 years, it's a flood that has a wanted 100 chance.
I understand.
I know you do, but a lot of people use those phrases, um, as if it...
Yeah.
There's a Monte Carlo aspect to it.
Yeah.
This is not true.
Well, maybe in, maybe it's more a Monte Carlo aspect, but on any given roll of the spin of the dial, you've got a...
The version, the version of the flood maps we just adopted does not incorporate that higher, well, incorporates a higher wave, but not the higher, the wave you talked about.
Yeah, so just, just the fact that you've got a 100-year storm wave doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to produce a 100-year, um, flood elevation, because you've got to factor in tides and things like that. So...
Yeah, sure.
What we did with the, uh, the FEMA flood mapping was we, we basically analyzed, uh, I think it was around 150 storms over a 30-year record, which included those big storms in, in the late 1990s, as well as, um, events in 2006, uh, was the other big winter, I think it was, and up through to 2011 was our, our, um, last sort of consideration. Um, and, uh, you, you modeled the waves coupled with the tides, and you look at the joint sort of probabilities of those to address the question of total floodwater elevations at the shore. Factoring in, you have to, you have to acknowledge the beach slopes and, and factors like that. So all of that is, is integrated into the, the new FEMA flood maps.
Uh, I've got to say something first rather than asking you, and that is, there ha- there has been an expression by a number of people in the, uh, large volume of material that we got recently and over the past couple of years or so, that, uh, you know, we, we shouldn't grade the dunes because in effect, uh, my reading of it is, the more sand there, the more it's going to protect us from, from floods. It seems to me that if we, my first thought was, if we've got FEMA plus four, then we're protected as far as the feds are concerned and as far as I'm concerned, but, uh, maybe we should say FEMA with a, with a fudge factor to make it higher in, in light of your findings. Uh, and if we, if we then do that, we say we've got FEMA plus, plus four, and by understanding correctly, that that's going to protect us from flooding as much as having the kind of dunes that we've got now.
So based on all the, all the analyses that we have done, um, you know, we came up with, uh, total water level elevations of around 28 feet, I think it was, thereabouts, depending on where you are. Um, and so FEMA, FEMA plus four puts you at, at 32 feet. Uh, with a very broad June system, then yes, you are probably safe from the effects of flood. You're not going to see flooding in, in that area. Now, if the beach narrows out, if the June narrows out and is eroded over multiple years, then that changes things as well. Because with the FEMA flood mapping, those calculations are based on what we define as the most eroded winter profile, um, which for the most part on many of our beaches was, was the 97, '98 winter as our starting baseline. And then we're eroding, we actually have to erode the June based on the conditions of the storm and then apply your run-up calculations on that. So there's multiple factors, so there's a lot of...
You've got the cross-section going out from the vegetation line or wherever to the, to the surf line, and, and presumably the FEMA, if I understand correctly, the FEMA instructions tell you what that cross-section's got to be, and if you've got erosion, then that's being reduced. And so, again, presumably putting in a fudge factor to allow for, uh...
So you're saying...
For what erosion could reasonably be expected.
So you're saying, uh, take the FEMA flood elevation, add four feet plus an additional...
However much you think is going to be, uh, taken out by, by...
Again, that's a decision I'm not going to make. I mean, that's an option for you.
Yeah, I'm asking you to sort of to comment on it. I, I, I warned that I was going to be saying something before I was going to be asking anything.
Sure. So my, so my comment goes back to what I said before, that, um, with the existing estimates, um, you know, based on the data that we have available to us, we do not believe that we'll see, uh, run-up elevations reaching above 29 feet.
Okay.
And so FEMA provides some additional conservatism, so you're up around 32 feet. Um, and with the question mark that I added before, that were this area to start to erode and cut back, and cut back significantly, then that would need to be reevaluated.
And this is based on historical data?
Correct. Which we have three to four decades.
Right, but things are changing.
Sure. And one of the limitations of the FEMA work is that FEMA doesn't, Congress actually precludes FEMA from accounting for climate change. It's not incorporated into the FEMA flood mapping.
Wow.
So it only considers extreme storms.
Need, need a larger fudge factor.
That's shocking to me. I had no idea.
Was the path back at the creek, um, similar to what it might have been in, uh, the 90s? Because we did have quite a bit of erosion where the creek met the ocean and the pa- uh, pushback of the waves, and it actually did take, um, the dunes out where some of the plumbing existed. And so, and we've tried to do the taco, whatever, nacho.
This is in that, in that, uh, bin?
Yes, yes. And so I was curious if it, if that, um, had cut back that far back in the 90s or if you were...
So, uh, Chuck Rosenfeld, who did the original June management study, um, did talk about that and provided some, some historical, uh, descriptions in his report of the changes that were taking place in that area. So there is a, there has been a history of that area having eroded, uh, through the 90s. Um, so you, I would suggest that you, uh, take a look at that. I think I summarized, um, some of his major comments in this report, um, and then it has continued to obviously change and erode since then.
I was just kind of wondering why, why the piping was there like that, because, um, Breakers Point was built in the 80s, and so that erosion, uh, I was just curious.
I, I, Mike, can you comment on...
I don't know when that natural gas line was put in, whether it was part of the original Breakers Point or whether it was added later, but that's correct, there was erosion all the way through there, through the 90s, until recently, you said last, well, let's call it five years, that erosion has just not gotten close enough to infrastructure to have risen very high on anybody's concern list. Um, but now that it is, it exposed that gas pipe and it's within, I can't remember how many feet of the closest dwelling now, so definitely it's just higher on people's radar now than it was in the 90s.
If, if this, if the data doesn't take into account global warming, how can it be relied on? I mean, you're a scientist, I'm, I'm not understanding that. It just doesn't make sense to me. It's like when I bought my house, they told me I wasn't in the, in the tsunami zone.
So, I didn't say that, I didn't say the data wasn't reliable, I said that, um, the FEMA flood mapping doesn't incorporate...
That's what I meant, the FEMA data is what I'm talking about, yeah.
So, um, I, I guess the way Congress thought of this was that these flood maps would be reevaluated every 10 years or 20 years or some basis like that, but in reality, that's never happened. It, it can take many decades, more than that, to actually, um, fund new studies to update these things. Um, it's the best available information we have right now. And, and let me just add that with the modeling work, when we developed those, those maps, you know, we basically threw everything we could at it, uh, to come up with reasonable estimates based on our knowledge of historical events from what we've seen up and down the coast to help guide us.
But that's the problem, historical events.
Well, we have historical events going, we have historical events in some areas going back to the 1930s that provide pretty impressive pictures of, of...
Things are changing.
Of conditions that happened at that time that could be applicable today, meaning that the storm that actually drove that erosion could still happen today, irrespective of what the beach or sea level rises do it. That's my point.
Okay, and, and also I just want to bring, I'm not trying to worry this thing to death because I've already brought it up, but I, I just want to talk about the next page too, and that's page 80 on your thing, the end of 80. Managing dunes is founded on three important objectives, it starts with, on 80. This is, reading through this, the, the three objectives, maintain erosion, prevent erosion, uh, weak points in the system, habitat, and then you say increasingly, we are coming to recognize a fourth objective. And I'm just saying this for the record, because this is on the record. This, the way that's worded is a problem, in my opinion, because you are saying that, you say, we have come to recognize, people are relying on this as a scientific document, you're saying, we have come to recognize, it sounds as if, if someone from the outside were looking at this, they would see this as a valid, it's like you've made a judgment, a value judgment, that this is a, a, an objective that is valid, when it, I think that if you wanted to reword it in a way that was more accurate, you would say, in some jurisdictions, a fourth objective, objective has become an issue. That would be a way to word it, because then you're not making any kind of value judgment, you're not saying, we are, we are coming to recognize, a person from the outside reading that in a scientific paper would take that to mean that it's a, that it is a valid objective. And we don't, well, that's how it reads.
I don't, I don't read any justification for doing grading there, I'm just stating the fact that it is, it has become apparent increasingly in the scientific literature and in communities, that grading is going on. That's what I'm saying, grading is going on, and that in order to do this, to maintain grading, you need to do it in a scientific way.
Right. I, I'm not a scientist, but I do know how to read, and I'm saying that this is, the way it's worded is, it's not, it is not worded well, and it confuses people.
May I insert something? This, this is the reason that I asked for clarification of whether this is a document which has been delivered, they're not, there's not going to be a later addition, because I've got, I'm not as important as yours, but I've got a bunch of things that I would say, I would like to see this worded that way, not going to happen.
So...
You've, you've scolded him now.
I'm not scolding him, I'm just trying to make a record.
So let me, let me also add, in, in my defense here, that I provided this information to you in May last year.
Yes.
You had ample time, and I asked you at that meeting to provide comments to me. I never...
Fair enough.
Anyone back from the meeting.
Okay, okay, I, I did at the meeting.
No comments came to me, so if, if the comments came to me, I would have addressed them.
Thank you.
Well, I, I did address certain things at the meeting, and I felt that you didn't give me an adequate answer then either.
Okay, I'm going to put my own hand up again. Uh, I noticed that in the, in the numbers that you gave for the volume of sand that's in the Cannon Beach littoral cell and the volume of sand that had been accreted into the cell, added into the cell from 1997 to 2015 or whenever it was, that there was, in a couple of places in here, and I can find them if you need, uh, that that represented an increase of something like a fourth of a percent of the existing sand per year that was being added to the littoral cell. Uh, that's, that's a lot of sand, and I, I don't think, I'm, I'm a little bit, uh, less concerned, I'm not sure where this takes us as far as making policy and changing our, our, uh, ordinances and so forth, but I was surprised to see that. Is that really what, what you're saying in there, and do you see any, any cons, any geological consequences of...
So you're saying that there's, uh, more sending, sand coming into the system?
That's what you're saying.
So, uh, do you want to point to...
Sure, let's see, uh, I've got that on pages 64 and 78, and I'm pretty sure I've got the same presentation as you.
Look, accept anyone, accept certain...
Yeah, which one?
This, this is the new one.
Oh.
I, I printed it out, but Alicia had put it on, on there. Uh, about, there's a, a paragraph about not quite two-thirds of the way down page 64, that's, the heading is, "These changes have probably continued, contributed to the following responses. The Cannon Beach littoral cell gained an additional approximately 111,800 cubic meters of sediment since 2009." Oh, okay, so that was even a shorter period of time.
So, uh, let me just, um, if I can back up a sec. So if you recall, I think one of the statements I made in there was that, um, in terms of the, the, just doing the little bit of accounting that we do with each of these little blocks, and when you do the math there, you find that, um, basically the amount of accumulation that's occurred at the north end of the cell, um, relative to the amount, the amount of erosion was like 38% of the, the...
Yes.
Total volume.
Yes.
And so by that virtue, that sand had been coming from somewhere else.
Mm-hmm.
So the only other, since the Echolac Creek is unlikely to be carrying significant sand-sized material to the beach system...
Right.
It's got to be coming from offshore, which means it's likely to be coming from the near-shore environment, from sandbars and, and features like that that are, um, out in the surf zone. And we know that from, uh, studying sandbar movements at, uh, multiple sites around the country where there is, uh, hourly records of changes using cameras, that we can actually track the movement of these bars over time. In fact, it's been well-established that some of these bars, uh, can take, you know, as much as 10 years or so to, to travel through the system and then disappear and then reform again. So we know that it's a very dynamic area, we know that it's, it's, we know that, um, uh, it does supply sand to the beaches.
Uh, let me interrupt to, yeah, maybe I was, uh, putting an assumption into this, and that was, it, it sounds now like you may be explaining that you're talking about what happened during that specific time, but it might be, the opposite might be happening at, at some other time. And I interpreted this as meaning that this was a typical accretion of some of the 200 years, you would have half again as much sand in the littoral cell as you do now.
So on, on, I think on, on 64 there, I mean, I note that, you know, for example, between 2009 and 2016, um, the entire, uh, cell gained about 111,000 cubic yards.
Yes.
Sorry, 146,000 cubic yards.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then relative to 1997, it was a net gain of 273,000.
Mm-hmm.
So these are just reference points in which we're measuring change against. So 1997 is our baseline, it's the earliest complete dataset that we have on the coast.
Okay, so, so I, I would...
I don't have anything...
I'm misinterpreting this as, as being an ongoing, something we could expect to...
No, not, not necessarily. No, I mean, that could change again, it goes back to what I said earlier, it could change next winter and could be a reversal in the next decade.
Okay.
All I'm stating is, is, uh, the facts of what we know... All I'm stating is, is the facts of what we know that has happened over the timeframe of data that's available to us.
Okay, I guess I would, that would be one of the things where if you were going to, if it had been the case that you were going to have further edits going in, I would suggest clarifying that, but that's neither, that's under the bridge. On page, let's see, 68. I think this is something that I wanted to comment on, but I think that it's, that may not be, anyway, you'll recognize where I'm talking about. I think that at some place, and maybe it belongs in the request, in the crest report or something that we need to come up with or say where it's going to come from. And that is, I have been concerned all the way along that if all of the other things here go as any, as one of us would like to see it, we, I think we all agree that one thing that has not happened the way we would like to have seen it was monitoring, reporting. I think one thing that, when we get to recommending something to the city council, we need to require that there be something very formalized about who sets, what reports have to be submitted, by whom, to whom, who sets what needs to be in them, what happens if they're not reported and so forth. And it's something that has gone by the wayside. Apparently it was Tom Horni who was supposed to be doing the reports, and he has told me personally. He is able to flip things sort of slides sometimes. And I think that, that's something that, that can't happen. You had a discussion of what happened, you know, what's going, how is this going to be dealt with? After the grading, I think that's something that needs to go in there, but not a scientific issue.
So I think what I stayed in there, and that's recognized again in multiple studies that have been done elsewhere, is that, you know, whenever you're doing these types of grading operations, it should be carefully monitored. And we explicitly state that in the report.
And I think that we have to, we have to put that on paper and we have to make sure and say, who is responsible for making sure that that happens?
In the policy and ordinance language that was accompanied in early draft of this, there was some changed language in that. We've never had any discussion about it, but there is a shelf for that type of stuff to go in, so.
Okay, yeah, I think, whatever it says, I think.
If we do get to that point, we really, we should drill down on that and make sure that's doing what you want.
Yeah. And of the things I've got in front of me, this is the last. Is there, one, another thing that a lot of people have said in opposing grading? And it's something that I have to agree with, and that is, people like how those dunes look. They like walking in them. I've, one of the pictures that I've got on my wallpaper on my cellphone is of those dunes. Do we have evidence of whether Northwest Dune Grass is more or less pretty? Presumably, if, if there was grading, there could be shaping of what, what shape those dunes are going to be. Do we have a basis for saying whether we were going to have nicer-looking or uglier-looking dunes if we changed what kind of grasses on them?
I have not seen anything about that.
Okay.
So again, the comment I'd make is, take a look up on the Klitscher Plains. I mean, you'll see an example where, as you go further north up the Klitscher Plains there, you'll see examples where Breville Galata, which is the Great Lakes grass, is growing on the seaward front of those dunes there, where sand is accumulating in front of the main four dune while you've got the European beech grass on top.
So I could compare them. Right, it's issue.
You can take a look at those ones. If you want to look at examples of graded beaches on the coast, Manzatita is another classic example. I mean, they've been grading those dunes for some time now. Is it a, is it a pretty June system?
No.
It's, it's, it's not a natural June by any means. I mean, it's a flat landscape for sure.
Can you be specific where that is? Is it beyond Gierhart? Is it in Surfines? Is it?
The Breville Galata?
Yeah.
I've seen it up by, if you go out on, I think it's Sunset Beach Row.
Oh, okay.
Just south of Camp Riley. You'll see, see it somewhere. It has a very broad blade relative to, to the European beech grass.
Camp Riley, I won't mind if we go up there.
The other suggestion I'd make is you might want to consider talking to Professor Sally Hackett at Oregon State. I mean, she, she is the expert on dune grasses in the Pacific Northwest. And she can point you to specific sites where some of these different species are present. And I would encourage you to reach out to her.
It might be nice to get her to send you some copies, Mark, of pictures, maybe, if there's something we can look at.
That, I can add one bit to this. That aesthetic question came up on, not on Breakers Point, but in Presidential Streets. And the Presidential Streets dune grading processes are managed by some sort of, I'm going to call them informal alliances of homeowners. They're a little less formalized than Breakers Point, although they may not like that description. But anyway, some of the principals there like the look of European beech grass because it's green all year. The native beech grass dies back in the winter. So if you're looking for that kind of sea of beech grass, looking year-round, European beech grass is what gives it to you.
Oh, not as many people, at least from outside the area, who are walking around in the winter.
Yeah, no, you're right. But that aesthetic point does come up.
Sure, thank you. Okay, I've got other things to say, but not tonight. Other closing comments?
Could you speak just a little bit about the timing of Santa Lula?
Yeah, that's, I think I touched on that earlier. I mean, that's, that's a challenging one with respect to its purpose. So the approach that was presented was, was if you are trying to minimize, if you're trying to minimize sand and tremors that blow back into the, into the dunes and maximize transport elsewhere, then the timing wise was sometime around May, I think, May, June, July, that early timeframe. If you are, if you are really trying to, to utilize wave power to remove the sediment and transport it elsewhere, then really you're talking about, you know, a winter activity. And the challenge with the winter activity is that obviously any revegetation is not going to take place in that timeframe. It's just not going to grow. And so now you're presented with the problem of having pushed sand out there in winter time. You're also exposed to very strong winds that will again and train those sands, particularly in those big southerly storms we've seen it, and, and transport a lot of that sand back up into the dunes. So then you're back to that nuisance. But obviously, timing wise, if you want to really remove it, then ideally wintertime is better because that's when the waves are going to more likely erode. And remove it offshore where it forms bars or potentially even be transported southward under the right conditions later in the season as it transitions to more summer conditions. But it's by no means an effective approach, either one.
The one thing I'd add to that is one of the conundrums of a wintertime campaign where you grade in the winter and then camp plant right away. In Oregon law, you cannot leave that area unstabilized. So you'll be looking at some sort of temporary stabilization measures like cocoa matting or something like that, yeah. And we've not done that here, but it's, that is, if you end up deciding that winter is the time to be doing grading, then you're probably also looking at some revegetation that's more complicated than what's been happening so far in terms of timing and some temporary measures.
So the vegetation that you would see in, in the spring on native grasses, when, when would you be seeing new growth?
So just again, my limited experience from having seen it at Cape Cod State Park. I've typically seen new shoots coming up in, in late March into April timeframe with full growth, you know, obviously by around June. But again, I would encourage you to talk to Dr. Hackett. She's, she's the expert on grasses.
Anything else? Okay, adjourned. Oh, it's a good order.
This will show up on your June, 29th, we said?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty sixth, excuse me, agenda unless I'm told otherwise. Sorry, I got the data.
Is this a side conversation or?
Well, I think we haven't talked very much about permitting and.
If there's some stuff you want us to bring to that July meeting, now would be a good time to tell us or in a subsequent email. But you can't really start debating amongst yourselves how this is going to play out tonight. But you can give us some direction if that's what, if you want particular material.
The difference between regular dune grading, permitting, and maintenance grading. And I don't think that there are some loopholes in this that I think should be looked at or tightened up, would be a better word to say.
In what? In this? The ordinance?
Yeah.
I can address that in a staff report for you on the 26th.
And also, like I said, I can't find in here anything about reporting, and I know it must have been.
We did write it in there. I'll.
I'm not finding it.
I'll highlight that for the staff report and send you a note ahead of time. I just can't pull it up right offhand. We also mentioned something from Dr. Hackett, and I'll see if we can get some information from her in time for that meeting too.
Yeah, I have some correspondence from her.
Great, okay, so we can incorporate that into a staff report.
Yeah, she sent me a bunch of research papers, so I have gone through those.
Okay. Well, if there's anything else that comes to mind in the next week or so, going to have to get that out, send me a note and try to track it down or incorporate it into the staff report for you.
Oh, as a, we clarified that, that this report is a, is a done deal. Where do we stand on the, on the crest report? Because I also sent you a markup on that, and if there's still time for that to have some effect on their.
Yeah, I think we can still work on revisions to that. I've been reluctant to bring revisions forward on this material because the last time I did, I was scolded pretty relentlessly on that point. So if you're explicitly directing me to make those changes, I will. Otherwise, they're going to come forward as you saw them.
My recollection is that what I sent you on, I think I also sent, sent this to you, was largely editorial nitpicks, but there were a couple of substantive changes that, you know, would be the reverse of what a number of people on the commission would like to see.
We can make those changes and highlight them and, you know, they're kind of out there then for you.
I would like those to be available. I will bring them up at the meeting when we're having our discussion and making decisions and things like that.
Then we should probably incorporate them into the draft you see next on the 26th.
Thank you. But there's no, no point of doing anything with the markups then on the, those three sections of this report.
Well, keep them in mind because I think that's, that's how you would want to inform the discussion you end up having on the policies.
Sure.
But yeah, I don't, this isn't an editorial session for the underlying report here.
Not for any of it. Okay, are we done? Are we done?
Thanks very much, everybody.
All right, that was all Facebook Live.